Okay, it's seven o'clock. Shall we begin? Welcome, everybody.
Evening, Mrs Mayor.
Mrs Mayor. Okay, so we shall start with item one, any apologies for absence?
We have the public session.
Oh, before the apologies, yes, sorry, I forgot about that. Okay, we shall go into the public session. I believe we have one person to speak.
No, you don't.
We have Rebecca.
We do, we do, Steve, it's not you.
Do we?
Rebecca. We have Rebecca Clark. We have Rebecca.
Hello.
Hi Rebecca.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. And I wanted to address the town council today as a local resident about how, as a community, we plan to address issues surrounding racism, colonialism and identity. And I'm sure that since the death of George Floyd, that triggered protests across the country by the BLM movement calling for an end to institutional racism and the removal of the Colston statue, which sparked a nationwide debate about slavery and colonialism. But as a council, you will already have been having conversations about what has become a priority for government at every level across the country. So I'm keen to engage with you in and understand the conversation that we're having as a town. And to understand the progress that's being made, I'm keen to engage with you in my official role. So I work at Stowe School and I am the head of faculty for arts and culture and this week have been appointed as the head of diversity, which is the first diversity role that has existed at Stowe. And so part of that is working along with other schools in the local area as well. So the first thing that I'm doing in my role is creating a framework for educational change. And that is quite complex in terms of the different areas that it plans to address within education and beyond within our communities, reaching out to our parents, our governing bodies and the broader community as well to address systematic racism as well as conscious and unconscious bias. Beyond this, I'm going to be focusing on ensuring that the curriculum that we deliver at Stowe across all age groups develops people with a strong understanding of equality issues. And again, I'm keen to be engaging with our local schools in terms of how the curriculum is being developed across the board in primary and in secondary education. I'm sure that you agree and would like to discuss more, the best education that we can provide for our future decision makers is one that empowers them to stand up for values such as equality when they leave school and enter society. So it's important that this is embedded in the curriculum that we teach, no matter what subject our pupils choose to take for GCSE or A level. And so to this end, I'm keen to engage more broadly with stakeholders like yourselves, which is why I wanted to speak to you this evening in order to work with as many sectors in our community as we can, as well as with our young people, because obviously it's about more than our young people having a view and perspective, because often we find that young people come into our school already with unconscious bias that is perpetrated by their parents and views of other generations that they bring with them as baggage. So this is about the whole community being involved in the creation of a vision to drive change. I'm aware, as you are no doubt, that not everyone is open to diversity of thought, which is why we've seen a backlash to the BLM movement by the far right and some pretty difficult scenes on our streets. And in my role, I'm sure you can imagine that already I've had some quite difficult conversations and confrontations and as a woman of colour, I have had to seriously think about whether this role is something that I'm prepared to put my personal self into in my professional setting because of the backlash that I know, and as my headmaster said as well, that he knows that I will personally receive. However, it's work that we must do, it's important. And not everyone celebrates difference. And so what I want to find out is what Buckingham Town Council do in order to promote and celebrate difference in our community and how we can move forward with this as a priority. And how we tackle racism that we experience in daily work through microaggressions, through insidious everyday moments, which are again experiences that our peoples have in our schools. Odd comments here and there, which might be claimed to be banter, but actually are more damaging and hurtful than that for both the receiver and the perpetrator. So we have to work hard to eradicate this in our society and in our community. That I've been invited to have a conversation with the Black Lives Matter organisation at the Royal Latin School. So they've set up a group, you may be aware. And they have asked me as an ex-Latinite to talk about my experiences of racism at the school. And equally, that's happened at Stowe. We have invited our old Stoics to come and talk to us. Some have approached us about their experiences at Stowe of racism. So racism exists in our house, it exists under our roof. And I'm going to be speaking to the Latin this week and I'm pleased that they have, for the first time since I left the Latin School a long time ago, that I have been asked for the first time to engage in this sort of conversation. So for me, that's really heartening and really in terms of our movement forward. There are those who refuse to accept the legitimacy of structural racism and its symptoms. And so we have to work hard to challenge those that feel this. And there's a gulf of an emotional disconnect that can be displayed when people of colour express their experiences of racism. So again, part of my role is to work with our teachers, our staff body, to run inset, to raise awareness as we would do with child protection or safeguarding or radicalisation that we deal with racism in the same way, which again, this has come from our government and our lawyers who have said this is something that will be sitting on the safeguarding agenda alongside child protection. And it will become as significant as the move to instigate child protection in schools following the tragic death of Victoria Columbia and the events surrounding and leading up to her death. And so this is something that, you know, I believe that we as a town need to be perhaps thinking very carefully about how we take this forward and how we lead on this as well. So one of the things that I'd like to just also draw attention to is something that I was struck by in Jean Sapon's book Diversify, where she talks about combating discrimination of all types. And she says, check your circle is what she talks about. And one of the things that we need to address in a school like Stowe and that we need to address in education across the country is role models, because there are very few senior leaders in the education sector who are of black and ethnic minority backgrounds, as there are in other government organisations. So I'm keen to understand the diversity that exists on Buckingham Town Council. Jean Sapon talks about checking your circle. She says, ensure that you look at your close counterparts you rely on and who you take advice from. And if that immediate circle has a similar background to you, if they look the same, if they were educated the same way as you, then none of us are doing enough to ensure that we empower our workforces and help society. And I find that very poignant and very important. She talks about how businesses and organisations grow and thrive on creativity and creativity is created through diversity. And so just to summarise, because I've spoken for quite a bit of time and thankfully I'm just the only person here to speak today, but it's, my question is about what the council is already doing, what you're already having conversations on, plans that are already in place, in terms of tackling institutional and structural racism, conscious and unconscious bias, microaggression and racism and diversity in role models in Buckingham and our community. And addressing our history. So to what extent are we engaging with, always Buckingham Town Council, perhaps engaging with the National Trust, Landmark Trust, our historians, our local libraries in terms of looking into our colonial past and having about our schools and about our landmarks that may well be named after slave owners, the Duke of Buckingham being one of those. And we have names of schools and streets in the town after him. So thank you very much for listening. I'm happy to answer any questions. A lot of different areas, but it's a very complex, multi-layered issue. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca for that. And that's very interesting. And best wishes to you on your post. I'm sure it'll give us lots to think about and lots to talk about. Chris, you've got your hands up.
Yes, thank you. I would like to ask Rebecca just one thing really, you know, how relevant do you think these issues are in a town like Buckingham, which is a largely white community? Of course, you've grown up in it, so you know that. But what have been your own experiences, you know, what can you say? Does the town really need to learn about diversity?
Yes, it absolutely does. My experience growing up in Buckingham was being very often told to go home or go back to where I came from. Having racism sadly at school from pupils and staff. So when I was at the Latin School, I was told that I wasn't allowed to play on any school sports team because of the colour of my skin. And in schools, I've also suffered from physical abuse from teachers, been deliberately held back with my academic learning, so being made to sit on remedial tables, having learning materials taken away from me, being made to stand in a corner by one particular teacher and also receiving racism from my peer group as well. And one of the key things I think about Buckingham is that, you know, across our country, actually, you know, we are, we do live in a majority monocultural environment. However, that does not lessen how important it is for all of us to be educated about equality and diversity. Because our children in our community are going to go out and live wherever they go, they're going to be in, you know, mixing with our global society in which we live. So we need to think globally. Take that responsibility. So I hope that that answers your question, Chris.
Thank you very much, Rebecca.
Okay, thank you. Where's Paul around? I can't see him now.
So we've got Robin and Lisa and Andy.
We're not really supposed to answer questions, do you think?
Well, can I, can I speak or not? Well firstly, can I congratulate you on the courage to come to the meeting today and address these issues, which have been evident within your life and your work experiences, and you should be admired for that. Secondly, I would be interested in talking to you outside the meeting on the elements around education and how you pursue to put that forward, because outside the town council, I have responsibilities to do with education. And I can learn from you things that I need to know, because obviously it's pretty obvious that my background and my heritage is immensely privileged and white. So I, you know, not economically privileged, but privileged by my colour. The other matter is, I would like to talk to you about how you feel raising diversity could be something we could presume, presume through the small matrix that we have, which is the use of an events team and how we can do something engaging with you. And the other thing is, I'd be interested, lastly, to support you and in any way possible, in your efforts within education. I think that these situations can be opportunities and opportunities for change should never be turned away. And if you're not challenged by the questions, you haven't really thought about them. And, and every time somebody raises something, you, it challenges your own perception of your, what you thought was normal and you realise it never was normal. So could you please, there's three things there and I hope that they're a positive response to your tremendous efforts tonight.
Thank you.
And Lisa and Andy have their hands up.
Hey, I can't not get in the full screen at the moment of everybody, so I don't know quite what's happened there. Was Lisa, who was first? Is Lisa there?
He's on mute.
Sorry, my bad. Thank you. All right. So firstly, I'm surprised that Stowe have only just appointed someone in a role of diversity. And that is a little bit surprising in today's day and age. So the second thing is, you were talking about the circle and if you look around and people are raised similarly, then maybe you're not doing enough. If you look at the town council, we all fairly look very similar. But I was raised, raised in London. All of my friends are multicultural. My nan, she adopted and fostered children of mixed race and African backgrounds. My auntie Mary is from Africa. So I may look like my circle, but I'm very different in that regard. So I think sometimes it is important what your background is as well, not just, you know, looking at what's around you. And the third thing is, I am a youth worker at the Buckingham Youth Club. And we, we used to follow the same curriculum as the schools when we were running to Bucks County Council. So we would have Black History Month every year. It was something that we always did. But when we split from the county council, it dropped off. So we didn't do it anymore. But we have tried to get the university because they've got various clubs. We tried to get them involved in the youth club to come along and, you know, give a bit of history. And I've never really been interested in that, which is a shame. But we have our youth club leader, he's just unfortunately left the youth club now, Kingsley. He's of a mixed race background. So the young people, that what I've learned, working at the youth club for over 10 years, is our young people, which are teenagers, they don't see colour. So if they were going to describe one of their fellow, like one of their fellow friends, they describe what they're wearing. And they're not saying, oh, the Asian boy over there, they will, they will go by clothes. So I think children, they may get stuff from home, but what I found is that they don't often see colours. And, you know, so yeah, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Lisa. It's really interesting to hear. And I must just, just come back to you in terms of the diversity in your group, because I haven't even seen, I don't even know who you all are. I haven't seen your pictures. I don't come with any assumption about, about anything or anybody's, you know, what someone wears on the surface at all. And you all look like very diverse and interesting, wonderful people. I'd like to get to know more.
Thank you. Did you say Andy had his hand up?
Yeah, Andy had his hand up, I think. And then Mike.
Yeah. Yes, Rebecca, I have listened to what you had to say, but if you had looked at our council, you'll see I'm a person of colour. And I find it quite insulting for you to say that the council is not doing enough or should do anymore. I have also been a mayor of Buckingham and I have never, in all my experience, in the 12 years I've been with the council, experienced anything that would cause me concern. So, okay, it is in the front news at the moment that black lives matter. But it is not the only issue that we should be addressing. All lives matter. Like in Reading, I was concerned about the stabbing there. I thought, yes, everybody's going on about black lives matter, but white lives matter. Everybody's lives matter. You're not exclusive in your, in your speech about just one, one colour. Brown lives matter. You know, yellow lives matter. You cannot go around just saying black lives matter. Everybody's life matters. And I find it concerning when you're talking about statues and road nips. It is Britain's history. It is what it is. We have to stick with it. We, I always feel I'm not exclusively in this country. I'm glad to be here. They gave me refuge when we were thrown out of Uganda. I've lived in an African country. I've lived in India and I'm now living in Britain. So to me, I don't find the racism that you describe, I have not found it in any aspect of my life in Britain. So I'm always concerned when everybody talks about diversity, but what percentages? How are we working to diversity out? Does 83% is white? It's the white country. 5% are black, 14% are brown. How are we going to do the diversity on percentage terms? So I'm almost concerned on how you approach it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Andrew. So if I could just, just say to you that I haven't at any point said that the town council is not doing enough. That's not what I came here this evening to, to say or to make any accusation at all. I'm here purely to engage in a conversation and, you know, I'm, I'm really happy to hear your experiences in your life, that you feel that you've been in a position where you haven't experienced racism. And, you know, that's a wonderful thing. And I would like for every person in this country to be able to say the same thing.
We've got Mike and Howard with their hands.
Okay, I think after that, we need to move on to the main meeting.
Is that me then?
You, Mike.
Yes, Mike.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you Rebecca for coming and opening up this enormous can of worms, which really does need opening. We don't normally discuss these things after a presentation from a member of the public, but I would like to suggest to colleagues on the council that this is too big an issue to cover just in a few minutes at the front of a meeting. I think we should be setting up a workshop, inviting people from other communities, including Rebecca, and get into the issue and really dig down and see what more we can do.
Well said, Mike.
Thank you.
Oh, lovely.
Howard, did you want to speak?
Yes. Thank you very much for putting your point over so well, Rebecca. Believe it or not, I have suffered racial abuse when I was a child, but I don't want to go into it now. The matter should not be discussed now. It is a matter for all council. And I think we have to do some thinking about how we would actually actively target it. Just in case you think that the Duke of Buckingham, and Buckingham is going to change his name, it won't, because Duke of Buckingham took his name from Buckingham and he's got totally different reasons for naming it. I don't believe that history can change us. And I don't believe that putting statues down is necessarily the right thing. I can understand the emotive part that people feel about it. But it's also an example of the terrible things that went on. And nobody would consider pulling down some of the concentration camps because of all the horrible things that went on. They are a reminder of what went on. But we also have to consider it as a town council. We can't sweep it under the carpet. It should be out in the open. It should be discussed at a proper council meeting. And from there, we decide what we want to do. And it shouldn't be done interim anyway.
Yeah, thank you, Howard. We've been asked these questions at Stowe by the press in terms of the statues, landmarks and so on that we have. And I'm sure you're familiar with the gardens. And the National Trust and the Landmark Trust are working across the country and have been since before George Floyd's death. That's something that's been happening, that they've been addressing over a number of years and the blue plaques as well, to look at how we make sure that we're telling all of history and not part of history. And that's what I think is really important for our young people to have, is to have a full understanding of of everything that's happened in our past and why we are where we are today. As, you know, you do see in Germany, you do see how, and there's a very long word, which is German word, that is about redressing and understanding. Yeah, that, and that we can learn.
I just want to make a technical point. Robin mentioned Prevent Campaign. The Prevent Campaign was run very successfully by AVDC. It's now run by the Buckinghamshire Authority Council. And it encompasses the major areas which are a problem within Buckinghamshire, such as High Wycombe and parts of Cheshire and so on, and Alsbury, obviously. So as far as going with the Prevent Campaign, which is run under the Home Office, you should talk to Adam Cheo, who's still within the offices of Buckinghamshire Council.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you.
Don't forget to get in touch with me Rebecca.
I will.
We'll be in touch later. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we shall move on to item one, any apologies for absence?
I did, I did want to have quick 60 seconds in the public station.
Did you?
If I could. Slightly warmer, my plane's subject.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to comment, you're debating the proposal to close the High Street and item four of the agenda. I just wanted to say that as the unitary, one of the unitary councillors for the town centre, I've not had any approaches from anyone for this to happen. So I just wanted you to know that. What I have suggested is that there might be some consideration for the upper level of the height of of Market Hill to potentially be pedestrianised, because that's of course where the sun would hit. Encouraging outdoor culture with the pubs and restaurants opening up next month hopefully. But I haven't had anything regarding the main road itself. So just be a bit cautious about the motion that's being put forward. And also I do know that Newport Pagnell had to rescind their high street closure because it failed and the shops campaigned against it. So it only lasted four days.
Mark has withdrawn that motion.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Thanks for that. The second point was on. Okay. And hopefully on item six, you've got reports from Buckinghamshire councillors. I do hope that the town council will continue some level of allowing us to report back.
Yeah, sure. I think, yeah, that's to discuss later as well, but certainly, yeah. And Newport Pagnell and Wendover had withdrawn their plans very quickly. And I'd heard of other areas that the traders said the footfall had dropped off dramatically. So that's why. And that's gone off the agenda. Sorry, did we do any apologies for absence in the end? I've lost Paul on my screen.
No, we still need to do apologies.
We do. We have apologies from councillor Reasonuel and councillor Paddy Collins.
Okay, thank you. So item two, any declarations of interest?
No.
No. And we've, we've not got item three now or item four, as Mark's taken his motion off following information from Newport Pagnell and Wendover and others. So we can move on to item five, the
Sorry, 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 Mrs Mayor. Chair, we've taken off item three as well. I don't understand. That's a briefing note from the Deputy Town Clerk. That's been rescinded.
Okay, sorry, where's Paul?
Yeah, well, the briefing note from Deputy Town Clerk relates to closing the High Street. So, briefing, the agenda item is to receive a report, not particularly to discuss it on the assumption that the item would be discussed under the following agenda item. So, I think the mayor's assumption is that because Mark's withdrawn his motion, it doesn't make much sense to talk through the details report. That's where the motion doesn't stand.
I agree. Yeah, I agree.
Robin and Mark, put their hands up.
Well, sorry, I would like to talk about this matter because I don't think it's one that's going to go away. And even though that, that motion in that form has been withdrawn, I still think there are issues to discuss with regards to social distancing in the town centre. We can't just forget about that. And I would like to, and I would like to have that discussed. Sorry, what was that, Chair?
I said that's not closing the High Street. We, we can, if Paul thinks he's got any briefing on the social distancing, do you want to, have you got any report on that?
No change at the moment.
Well, we, yeah, we can give a verbal update on what we've done in the town, but that's where we are at the moment. It's something that's been discussed at committees and we put up posters around town reminding people to socially distance, but no, no formal measures have been introduced in the town. And there've been extensive conversations at TCE and EWG on that subject and environment. Mark wants to say something, as does Robin and Anthony.
Yeah, thank you Madam, Madam Chairman. Yeah, the reason I've withdrawn my motion today is because I, I made it because of Newport Pagnell's decision last Monday to close the High Street for the foreseeable future. By Thursday, the traders are up in arms. They weren't getting any footfall at all. They were closing their shops at four o'clock in the afternoon. And so they and a couple of other towns, including Wendover, have decided not to proceed with this and they've gone back to normal things. But as John Harvey just said, they are looking at other ways of trying to improve footfall. What you're likely to hear in the next couple of weeks is that cafes, pubs, restaurants will be encouraged to spill out onto the pavement. So, social distancing will be better enacted and that's where our problems are going to start. So, I'm absolutely behind John on this. Thank you.
Okay, John?
Well, I guess I, I put up an email to everybody. It's not on the agenda, but I was going to wrench on the issues that I raised in the email under, under items three or four, depending on whether we got around to it. I think there's a case to be made particularly by the butchers where the pavement is very narrow. There is no alternative pavement to use on the other side because of the old jail and I think we have to do something about that. If we're serious about whether it's two metres or quotes one metre plus, whatever that's going to be, nonetheless, there is no way anybody can pass by each other, especially if they're waiting outside the shop, without being fifty centimetres away from each other. That's just the nature of the, of the, of the, of the situation. And moreover, given what Mark has just said, I think there are going to be demands from the, from the cafes and other hostels to find some way of allowing an open outdoor space for people to have cups of coffee or maybe half a pint of beer or whatever. Now, there are licensing issues with that. There are also issues with regards to positioning and use of the town centre. We have to be talking about this. We can't be pushing this down the track because quite frankly, if this goes to TCE now, where they're going to be waiting another whole cycle before we get back to the full council, by which time, who knows who might have been infected by people unfortunately being too close. Without any, without, with all the best will in the world, if you're walking down that side of town, you simply can't get past somebody without going too close. Otherwise, you're going to be run over by a car coming the other way. So, my proposal was that we actually put in place a temporary, albeit possibly a long-term temporary road closure that closes one side of the road and bring in traffic light control. So, therefore, the, the road that's on the side of the butchers, that is then, that half the road is closed and that goes from, from the outside Prago up to maybe around about where the dry cleaners is. And all of that side of the road is closed. There will be a gap obviously for verniclose. So, people can get in and get out of verniclose, but otherwise there should be a traffic light control. So, there's only one direction of travel at any one time. Now, that would allow some of the cafes to actually spill out. Coffee Number One, for example. It would also allow people to pass safely outside the butcher and for the butcher, whose businesses should be supported like any other business, and I speak as a vegetarian, but I still want that business to thrive. And I, you know, I just think that's a way of thinking creatively about this. I also think that we should be looking for ways of creating more space on the other side of Market Hill, maybe closing down the parking spaces outside Smarts and Tesco, but leaving the other spaces on the other side of the road open. And, and through all of that, try and look for ways to actually allow more space. Because I mean, I've seen, for example, that WH Smith has now opened again on the fairly narrow pavement and they very carefully put out one metre strips. I saw them sticking them down the other day. But if people are standing outside WH Smith, somebody walking down that side of the road, where are they supposed to go? So, there's a whole array of implications of this, even with, like I say, one metre plus distancing that might be coming in tomorrow, that we as a town council must be talking about. And we can't just simply put these items on the agenda, take them off and imagine this has all gone away. We've got to be talking about it.
Here, here.
Okay.
People, their hands up. We've got Christine, Robin, Anthony, Andy.
Who was first?
I had my hand up when you took John.
Okay, I'm here, Robin.
Firstly, I think we should thank the Deputy Town Clerk for a thorough report. And I think she addressed many of the major questions within that report, which would have been addressed if the motion hadn't taken forward. Secondly, we must respect the person who withdrew the motion and the reason for why they withdrew it. And, and we shouldn't question that in any way whatsoever. And thirdly, I think this gives us an opportunity based upon what was said in the public session to enter into discussions around this thing. I think we need to use the, we have no powers over the highway and we can only seek powers over the highway. So, I think this is a question that if you wish to change anything on the highway, it really has to be a joint approach with the Unitary Council and use the Unitary Council. And lastly, I understand this was not only discussed at the Economic Group, who looked at it in an elastic approach and could not come forward with an easy recommendation. And it was discussed at events and that doesn't mean that we've ignored it. It means we haven't found the silver bullet which will address these issues. And I understand all the concerns round it, but we are not the statutory highway authority and we have no statutory powers instrumentally to do this. We have to do it in conjunction with them. So, going back to what I said earlier, it offers us opportunity of discussing that report, of which we could first that report to the unitary and ask them what solutions they could draw from that. I think that's the way forward. Claire did a very good report. It, it basically said it would be the Charter Fair road closure order. And, and it's evident anyone who's been involved in the Charter Fair, setting that up and learning the implications of that, that that does bring a large section of the community into play. So, I'm really grateful she's done all that work. I think it would have made for an excellent discussion, but we have to respect the proposer who withdrew his motion and he sincerely gave his reasons for doing so, which was based on, on experience of what has gone somewhere else. There doesn't preclude talking about it, but we are in no position now to actually take a decision forward because we have no motion to take forward. We only have a report which I suggest we know a minute.
Okay, I'm here, Robin.
I'll support that.
Christine has a hand up.
Christine?
Yeah, I, I was just hoping that we could actually, oh gosh, that's echoing, yeah, if, that we could actually go some way along the way that John says. We've got to discuss this a little bit if we're allowed to, you know, as the agenda is here because, yeah, we can say we can't do this, we can't do that for all these reasons that Paul so carefully set out in his report and that the county, what used to be the County Council would have said, the highways would say. But, you know, there are things that we could do. And if we could look at it positively, what can we possibly actually do? Not, not, you know, if we closed it, is this and that, yeah. Can, could we, could we possibly do what John said, you know, close one, one of the carriageways or one way or, you know. We've got to think of something to improve the centre of our town and to make it safer, you know, in this time of COVID. Thank you.
We've got Anthony and then Andy.
Okay, Anthony?
Thank you very much. I mean, Robin has already spoken about what I wanted to do. I thought we owed the Deputy Town Clerk a vote of thanks for a very comprehensive report, most impressive. And in a way, it was a pity that events have moved past, but I do understand why. But I think she does deserve a, a vote of thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Andy and then John has, oh, Andy and Howard and John again.
Yes, I'll also support councillor Tashri on this one. We, there are many issues that have to be discussed before we go any further, namely that we are not the statutory authority about closing highways. We also have to discuss about the emergency services using that road, the access to verniclose. And people are quite, we, we are doing this for whom? For the shopkeepers. I've spoken to a lot of the shopkeepers. They do not want any obstacle in, in the, in that section because of the impact on their footfall. They would like it, but it, it affects people will not, if there's an obstacle in town, they will not come into town. And talking about the bit above that where Smarts are, the people just go in quickly to get prescriptions. If they're going to not be able to do that, then they will go somewhere else like Tesco's. But they like to park ten minutes in, ten minutes or the ten minutes out and off, off they're gone. And if they're going to be an obstacle to getting to, getting to Boots or Jardines, we will, they will lose the business. So, we will really, it's, it's a massive, massive subject to talk about and the Deputy Town Clerk has done a fantastic job and we should just take that on board and move on.
And Howard?
Howard?
Well, Andy said most of what I was going to say. Has anybody actually talked to the shopkeepers?
I have.
And where, that's, that's what I mean. That's, that's what I said. It's the shopkeepers that we're trying to help. While those are important for the pedestrians, pedestrians should have a certain amount of common sense. And you do have the wide area where the post office is. It's not an ideal town. It's not an ideal town for traffic. But I don't think we should interfere with what the shopkeepers definitely don't want.
Geraldine, can I just add something as well?
Certainly.
And so just to update that, in the, in the last few weeks, there've been a whole set of conversations kind of formally and informally. Certainly Buckinghamshire Council, Warren and others have been keen to get the views of the town council. And I think if we came up with, if we come up with specific requests, they'll be very helpful in helping those happen. The Buckinghamshire Council have accessed funding through the EU to, for measures to help High Street reopen. And this is, this is a really tricky subject. There's no easy options. There's lots of difficulties around it. And the reason you haven't got any firm proposals on the table now are that there aren't any obvious and easy firm proposals. That's not saying there's not more we could do. Buckinghamshire Council have been really clear. They're open to monitoring the situation. So, it's not a thing that's been done and finished with. The expectation is that things will change and move. We might need to move quite quickly. So, I mean, I'd be really happy to set up a workshop with councillors at the back end of this week and give people a chance to walk around town for a couple of days and get views if that's what would be helpful to people. And I know the Buckinghamshire Council would be keen for informal views from a workshop office as well as a formal meeting. And I absolutely take John's point about the timing. I think it'd be difficult for us to make decisions and anything else tonight when you haven't got information in front of you about consequence and other bits of it. But, yeah, if, if that's something that would be helpful, I'd be happy to set something up at the end of the week. I'm not sure if anything more helpful I could suggest.
No, I think that's a good idea because like Andy, I've spoken to two of the traders and, and about the bit by the old jail and, and both of them said, they, they thought if there was traffic lights or, or something there, then people would shy off and not bother coming. And that's what they're worried about. Because they stay away from the fair and all that's much bigger, but they see it as a barrier and people will just go elsewhere.
John's got his hand up again.
Yes, John?
I think what, what, I mean, obviously, I mean, Robin's right. We're not the highways authority. We have no power to implement any of the ideas that we might have arrived at this evening. I mean, the aim of this, I'm sure, was just to simply, and I can see they're both, well, Warren and Charlie was here. Charlie's still here? Oh yeah, Charlie's here as well. So, I mean, you know, we've got, we've got, and, and we've got Howard and we've got Robin already here anyway, of course. So, we have four Buckinghamshire Council councillors here and obviously they all have authority and power and influence over what happens in the town with regards to the highways. And that was the point of having the discussion, of course, because we don't have that power. But I do think a workshop, because, you know, in my view, the town council, we're, you know, our job is to, is to cradle the town and look for all the possible ways to ensure that the town is, is healthy, wealthy and wise in, in, in all of its respects. And that means obviously looking after the traders in the town, but also looking after pedestrians as, as well. And frankly, if the town doesn't feel safe, people won't come into the town. It isn't just about the cars. If people don't think that they can walk around town and keep a sufficient distance from other people, they won't come into town. They'll go to places where there's more space and where things are better organised. So, I think, you know, it, it is in everyone's interests that we actually talk about this and we talk about it more. So, I'd absolutely thoroughly support, and indeed before Paul said it, I was going to propose it anyway, is that we have an urgent workshop with people who are interested to talk about what are some of the ways in which we might creatively and effectively make the town as safe as possible. And that means also make it as affluent and as commercially viable as possible. We are in incredibly difficult times right now. The commerce is, is through the floor and we have to do everything as a town council to think about how we can improve the situation. And that, it's about supporting the businesses and it's also supporting people to feel safe in the town as well. So, let's have a workshop. Let's talk about this some more. Let's spend a bit more time than we've had this evening discussing it. But let's not go back to the situation saying, oh, well, we can't change anything because people don't want to change. Well, we're in a, we're in an utterly unique situation. The pandemic has not gone away. There is, you know, just because certain matters are being unlocked at the moment, there is still vast amounts of virus out there and will continue to be for some time yet. We won't really be clear of all this until we've probably got some sort of vaccine. And who knows, there may never be a vaccine. There wasn't one with HIV and there hasn't been one for thirty-five years with HIV. There may not be one with, with Covid nineteen either. So, we have to think about how are we going to adjust our town to make it move forward for all the businesses and all the people in the town. So, let's have a workshop.
Yeah, I think a workshop's a very good idea.
And Robin's got his hand up.
I'd just like to speak last, if I can.
Okay, Robin.
I'd like to make a formal proposal based upon what Town Clerk said is that we organise a formal discussion, workshop round this, using as a discussion document the report which we've noted and agreed tonight.
Yeah.
And seek additional information from the Economic Group who looked at this and maybe the university and maybe the Buckingham Society. And more conclusively is to write to all the unitary members, particularly Warren, as he particularly made an effort to comment on it tonight, to, to, to actually discuss it. That's not precluding anything. And as I said, there's no magic bullet for this, but if we can find consensus amongst ourselves on a way forward, there's more of a chance of finding consensus in the public. And I don't think there's an easy answer. So, that's my formal proposal.
Okay. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Well, it has to be seconded.
Well, I think we're all agreeing.
We're all agreed. We need a workshop.
Well, it still has to be seconded for the actual purpose of doing anything, standing orders. Thank you.
The chair is seconded.
Okay, everybody who's in favour of that? Can't see everybody, but there you go.
Yeah, that is, that's unanimous.
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, we need to set that up as soon as we can really. And I leave that with you, Paul.
Yep, happy to do that. It will be Thursday or Friday this week.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we shall move on to item five. Okay, so we shall move on to item five, the Department for Transport's Emergency Act. To receive an outline proposal.
Can I just explain why we put this on the agenda first?
Yes, absolutely.
So obviously you have got a bit of a chunky um, agenda this evening, but this is something where we've been asked for a swift response. Um, not to agree in detail, but really to agree that this is something we would want to be further investigated and detailed plans to be drawn up. Buckinghamshire Council have access to other funding to do this. Uh, they've had a short, had a long list of 100 plus schemes, they've shortened it down to 15, one of which is this one. Obviously, it's positive, they're trying to do something in Buckingham. So really the questions are, is this, of the things you could do for cycling at the moment on the kind of time scale they're talking about, is this the best thing to do? Um, and they've given us some key questions to look at there. Uh, Robin has his hand, and Mike, Mike, is that your hand?
Yep.
Um, can I propose the simplicity that we agree the report and accept the fact that it's a work in process to, to, to allow those funds to be drawn to our community? I understand that the Cabinet members are working on this, which we, I must declare as the councillor on the Buckingham Authority, I have a slight interest in it. But I do think that to not support it would, would probably be a retrograde move. And I propose that we support the report and allow them to get on with the work that they obviously are trying to achieve.
Okay, thank you.
Mike.
And Mike.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I, I agree, it's something that we should support. The, the, the paper ends with a number of key, key questions. The middle one of which is, do you support the principle of creating quiet streets in residential areas of Buckingham Town? I'm not actually sure what a quiet street is, but I imagine that 20 mile per hour speed limits could form part of it. So I'd like that kind of flagged. And, and also the, the final bit there, the final key question is, how could this be used to support social distancing? That brings us back to the discussion that we just haven't had. So I think that is actually quite important at the moment.
Okay.
Paul, sorry, has his hand.
Sorry, Paul.
Is this the OD proposal, this one about cycling to Gawkett?
Yes, on that, it is, yes.
Oh, right. I, I, I mean, I haven't really thought about it, but I've thought of cycling to Gawkett and Gawkett to Buckingham never seems to be a terribly um, important route. I don't see many people who, it isn't actually a very busy road, leave alone a cycle route, but maybe I'm wrong, but. Um, it just seems that that's something, I would have thought it was better doing something to Maids Morton than it was to Gawkett.
You're quite right.
Yeah, I cycled to Gawkett a few days ago and I only met two cars.
Yeah, just seems it's not, you know.
Yeah, maybe.
They're all queued up behind you, Geraldine.
Yeah. Well, it's quite narrow that road anyway, isn't it? Yeah.
Lisa has her hand, and Robin.
Lisa? Where is she? Hello, Lisa.
Hiya. Right, so, um, I don't know when the secondary schools are going back, but I do know that um, a lot of the students, young people that go to secondary school who live in Gawkett, um, they, they um, fight for their lives cycling from Gawkett to Buckingham. So I think it's a good idea um, doing that. There are a lot of students, children that live in Gawkett that come into Buckingham for our schools.
On their bikes, huh?
Yep.
I'll have to go that time in the morning and have a look. Okay, thanks for that.
Okay.
And Robin.
And Robin.
Just to say that the crossing the A421 and A422, the A421 is a very important issue in this. And the fact that they're going to have a look at it is inspiring. Um, I was lucky enough to work um, historically with Gawkett to get lights along that road um, back in 2016, 17, because of the issues of safety along that road. And we are now presently in daylight, so we'll be moving into darker times. And you must realise that Gawkett does not qualify for home to school transport. And we don't know, as home to school transport's going to be an option going forward. So I, I'm grateful that they're looking at this.
Yeah.
And as was said by Mike quite wisely, this does add another dimension to the discussions of what we said earlier and should perhaps, as Mike suggested quite rightly, be included in that discussion. But I don't think we should stop them going ahead because they only have a limited time to get this money.
Yeah.
Money coming to Buckingham, I'm not going to stand in the way of it. Um, I'm, I'm going to sort of definitely support it.
Yeah, absolutely. And you're right, that crossing that, crossing the main road up there is, is dreadful. Paddy does tries regularly and we always get off the bikes and walk across because it's so dangerous. Andy?
Oh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, true, Chairman, I just want to address the Council Toshry. Robin, if you remember, many years ago, we asked them not to remove the lights on the bypass and Gawkett. And Mark Shaw still went ahead and still did it. It's so stupid now to, to reinstall the lights, just because there's now an issue about cycles and everything else. And if you want to try and promote people using the bicycles, the light should have been left both on the Gawkett and the bypass. And we're just going backwards again, it, it just beggars belief sometimes.
Just for information, Gawkett Parish paid for those lights and got a contribution from TFB. Also got a constitution historicity for my leaders' fund at the Times Council. But they did do it themselves, so they put the lights back and TFB supported them in it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that I can't see? No?
No.
No. Okay, so, go support that, yes? Do we need to?
It would be, it'd be helpful to vote for clarity.
Yeah, okay. So everybody who is in support of us getting back to, I mean, on a quick turnaround to support that proposal?
Are you calling for a vote, Chairman?
Yes, please. I can't see everybody again. Just need a second.
Yeah.
Okay, Christine's seconded.
Okay.
Okay, so that's. So I think Paul, Paul's abstaining and everybody else is in favour.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we shall move on to item six, the reports from Buckinghamshire councillors.
Can I just clarify this one, sorry, ma'am? Um, so, so the recommendation this report is that we carry on as we've been. And it's one of those things where it, it's not actually a pragmatic concern at the moment. So we don't have any, any councillors from outside of Buckingham wanting to take part in our meetings. Like, I'd said I'd put the report on the agenda and so I have done. Um, but it's, there's not a kind of actual problem we're trying to solve. It's just there is a theoretical anomaly which could arise. So I'm just asking to agree that we carry on with the same people who have presented reports in the future, doing so who have done so in the past.
Okay.
We've got John and Robin with their hands.
John?
So I just, I'm leaving myself. Um, actually, I don't agree with the report. Um, I think the, the, the problem is much deeper than this. And I don't think it's up for the Town Council to try and solve a problem that the, the new UBC have created for themselves. Um, I think they've chosen a method of allocating councillors uh, based upon rather quaint, shall we say, um, uh, method. Um, and it means that, you know, as the, as the report shows, that there is now a long list of councillors who can all claim, who could all claim to be councillors for Buckingham West. We've got a, a, a minimal list, shall we say, albeit certainly one extra than what we would normally have. Um, Sir Bevel Stania and so on, on, on the list. But I think that's because the Buckinghamshire Council have not really thought through the governance arrangements for this interim year. Now, we can leave it as is, but I think formally, I don't think it's within our right to say to the likes of, I don't know, Angela McPherson or indeed Sir Bevel himself or, um, or Patrick or whoever. Um, if they are formally councillors for Buckingham East and Buckingham West, that does mean that their patch does include our town. And if they want to come and report to the Town Council, they are quite within their rights to do so. Um, and I don't think it's for us to try and say, no, you can't come. Um, obviously, I would expect the usual suspects to turn up as they have done tonight, and that's great. Um, and I expect to see Tim here at some point, who knows, we'll ever see Simon here again, but there we go. Um, but everybody else obviously is always more than welcome. But I don't think formally as a Town Council, it's our job to contradict the governance arrangements that the new council, Buckinghamshire Council have put in place. I happen to think they've got it wrong. I think what they should have said is that you could, you'd be a councillor for a particular uh, new council ward if either you were, your previous ward was co-terminus, as it was for obviously Charlie and Warren, or the most of your ward or all of your ward uh, for the district council was contained within the new uh, UBC ward. And that would basically exclude the likes of Sir Bevel Stania and, and John Silver and Angela McPherson and, and, and so on. And indeed, Tim straddling both Buckingham East and West, because Tim only has, in Buckingham West, he only has the bit um, that covers um, uh, Fisher's Field because of the anomaly when they redrew the AVDC boundaries. Now, that's an issue for the Buckinghamshire Council to sort out. But I think as the Town Council, it's not our job to say to exclude those who are actually formally currently regarded as being councillors for all of Buckingham West, in the case of councillors Claire Feeley, Maudie Toshry, Chilwell, Cole, McPherson and Mills, um, or indeed for East, which is councillors White, Cole, Stania, um, and Mills. That's how the county, the, the, the new UBC, UBC arrange things. And it's our job to be open, open and welcoming to them all. If they wish to redraw those, those arrangements over the coming months, that's their choice. But I think that's not our job to solve it.
Okay, thank you, John. Uh, Howard, who you think? Howard?
Yes, okay, I just have time to mute it.
All right.
Um, I, I, I will in the vote, if there is a vote, abstain, because I am a Buckinghamshire councillor. However, I think John is partially right. But at the end of the day, it's up to Buckingham Town Council who they wish to invite to speak or not speak or give a report. Now, we are not Buckinghamshire Council's um, parish, we are Buckingham Town Council. And we can choose who we wish to speak or not. I think that's how it should be done. We should make a decision who you want to speak and leave it at that.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
And Robin and Mike.
Yeah.
Where is he?
I'm here. Firstly, um, firstly, can I ask the um, Town Clerk, when I finish talking, to give me the legal basis of the proposal? Secondly, I think we need to um, look at this in the round. Um, you know, we were grumbling about us being excluded from planning meetings and we were grumbling about um, being excluded from the Community Board meetings and not having voting rights earlier, early in the thing. It seems to be the flavour of the munch excluding people from things. But I do think there is a difference between many of the other people and Angela McPherson. Because Angela McPherson is the Deputy Leader of the Unitary Council and she may have information at some point she wants to bring to us. But I'm, I don't see any problem with voting, I myself, I have no prejudicial issue, I just have lots of prejudices. Um, so um, I, I, I think that we need to decide this um, uh, after the Town Clerk has told us the legal basis of the recommendation, which I'd like to hear now before we discuss anything else.
Michael also has his hand up. Geraldine, do you want me to answer or do you want Mike to go?
I'm, I'm happy for you to, to wait for the Town Clerk to answer.
Okay, that's fine, carry on, Paul, and we'll get Mike next.
Okay, so, so the legal basis is what Howard said, really. Um, the Town Council, well, I, I write, the agenda is mine, I write it. So in terms of the items on there, it's for the Town Council to decide who it wishes to address to speak. So whilst I, I take John's point about it's not for us to tell Buckinghamshire Council who should represent them how. It, the, the, the thought was it would be a pragmatic way of stopping agendas being too long. And I can say tangentially that Angela McPherson has written to me and said she doesn't want to receive agendas for Town Council meetings, we did start sending everybody, because she doesn't see herself as being elected to represent the views specifically of people of Buckingham. So although obviously she has come along as, um, when she was leader before. So she, I'm sure she'd be happy to come and engage in the role of Deputy Leader where that's relevant. But she doesn't, so that particular point's not that relevant. Um, but yeah, there's, because it's, it's about who the Town Council invites to come and speak. So that's a natural decision for the Town Council to make.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mike and John's got his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Um, we've always been pretty open about our Town Council meetings. Um, we've, we've welcomed everybody that wants to jam into the chamber or click onto Zoom to, to be there. So I, I don't see a problem in advising by invitation our Unitary Authority councillors to attend a meeting. Um, it doesn't matter how many or how few of them attend. Where our jurisdiction is, is who we invite to speak. And that is purely our decision. So really, I have no problem with this paper. I accept that it's a mishmash because of the way that the Unitary Authority has decided to divvy things up. And, and this is really going to only be just for the first year. Um, but really, who, who gives a damn who comes to meetings? It's up to us who we, who we invite to talk about a topic. And just one last thought is that these Unitary councillors, they might actually pick up a few good ideas and run with them from attending our meetings.
Yes.
Why not? Okay, was there somebody else waiting?
John has his hand again.
John, okay.
Yeah, I, I would just add, and I'm aware that, that the councillors, Claire and White are sitting here as well, and also, of course, Robin and Howard. I, I, I do think this is very confusing for members of the public, you know, for the ordinary punters. And we should be trying to get them used to having three councillors, at least for the time being, for their ward. Um, and right now, if I was a, you know, quote ordinary member of the public and I was looking at the list of people who could represent me on Buckingham West, I'd be thinking, what the hell is going on here? I mean, how does this work? Um, and seriously, I, I, I do, I would, you know, suggest that Buckinghamshire Council look again and how they've allocated the councillors, because it is mighty confusing to members of the public, I think.
I would agree with that. Okay, anybody else? No?
No more hands?
No more?
Uh, Mike?
Sorry, Mike got his hand.
Mike has his hand, yeah.
Yeah, I, I move that we accept the recommendation.
Is that Anthony seconding?
Yeah, I can do it.
All those in favour with that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10 in favour?
I'm abstaining.
I'll abstain.
So who's abstaining?
Me, John.
John and Geraldine.
One, two, three, three abstentions.
Okay. Right, we shall move on to item seven, the Community Board Representation. To receive and discuss a written report from the Town Clerk.
Uh, yeah, just to highlight that the recommendation is that the council appoints, that goes with what we already decided earlier. And that tonight we do nominate and appoint a representative and a deputy representative to the Buckinghamshire, Buckingham Village Community Board. Robin and Mike have their hands.
Robin?
Yeah, firstly, we should appoint somebody to the board. Um, um, but there has to be, I, 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 I obviously will sit on it, but we have to have somebody. I I I obviously will sit on it, but we have to have somebody um who can um represent the town council strongly in this board. The other thing is, I did for information, both tried to amend the book, the recommendations to act um the last council of the shadow authority. And I did speak about this matter and the our concerns at the shadow authorities' um cabinet meeting. And there is on the webcast quite a in-depth explanation of the unit review, which was different to ours on it. Over and above that, would be quite ridiculous to have um somebody from a small parish having a voice there. And though we've only got one person, which is challenging, representing us, not having a town councillor on there would be negative. And the other thing is, the argument they've got is we've got a multitude of unitary councillors or will have three. Well, of course, when they made that decision, they thought they were going to have an election and there would be six unitary councillors for Buckingham, which brings us back to John's point. There's a multitude of unitary councillors for Buckingham. Um. But um. So I think it's the right, it's the right decision and and I don't see any problem in supporting a member of the council. I think it has to be someone who who's got an in-depth knowledge of the planning and someone who's um who's who's able to attend those meetings for a start um and can be free.
Okay, thank you. Was there someone else waiting? Mike?
Mike, yeah.
There he is.
Okay, thanks. Um. Not with notwithstanding the the problems with these um with these boards that Robin has outlined, and the voting has always been a problem in the old LAFs and that. I just wanted to put the signal up that although I've been on the laughers as this council's representative since Adam was a lad or the laugh was formed, I can't remember which came first. I've have no wish to be on the on the board or to be its deputy.
Okay.
John has a hand up.
John?
Um. Conversely, to Mike, obviously, I was on the left for a couple of years while Mike was um mayor. Um, I'd, if if people wish, I'd be very happy to serve um the town council and be the representative.
Paul has a hand.
Whether um councillor Mark would be willing to stand.
Did everybody hear Paul then?
No, not quite.
Paul, could you say it again?
Uh, would Mark Cole be prepared to stand?
Uh, yes, thank you, Paul.
In which case I'd nominate you.
I'll second that. I'll second.
Lisa has a hand up.
Lisa?
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I didn't mind going as um the representative or deputy. But I'm quite happy if Mark wanted to do it. I wouldn't mind being his deputy on it as chair planning. We could maybe roll reverse.
Yep, I I second that as well.
Excuse me.
We man then.
Okay, have we got anybody else who?
Has has John been proposed as second? Sorry, has John been proposed as seconded?
Say that again, Paul.
Anybody propose John?
Yeah, I did.
You did.
And was that? Well, actually, actually, um Geraldine, because he said that he wouldn't mind doing it, I took that as a self nomination and I seconded him.
Okay, who seconded that?
If you need another person to second third, John.
Okay, right. So we have.
Two nominations and a deputy nomination.
Two nominations and a deputy nomination, right. Okay, so we need to take a vote on this.
Could could I ask that Paul reads out who's supporting whom? Because it it does account, but we don't really know who's doing what.
No, absolutely.
Is that for a minuteed vote then, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I said that I didn't mind being a representative or the deputy. Okay.
Oh, councillor Mark Cole.
Could could I just clear something for the voting? So it's simple. Um. Can I propose that we vote for the
For the?
The person to go on it and then automatically vote for the deputy, because it could be that the death, the person who didn't win would be willing to be the deputy in that extent. And what that I I Mark and John have worked together remarkably well in the past. So and then if that didn't get agreed, Lisa was offered to be a deputy in any extent. So we had to consider all those things. So we could at least take the vote in a proper way.
Yes, that sounds good to me. So we start with the, who was, what was the first proposal? Who can?
John was the first.
First, didn't they?
Yeah.
So so take a vote on John being nominated to be the representative. And we have a show on that.
Councillor Strain Clark, Smith, Stutchberry, Ralph.
John not voting for himself.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Harvey. Sorry, John, you're sat in the dark.
All right. And the second nomination was for Mark, yes?
Yeah.
So all those in voting for Mark to be the representative?
Uh, G Collins, Bloomfield, Cole, Hirons, Gateley, Maudue, Try and Mahi.
And me.
Oh, sorry, O'Donoghue. Mike, that was a very helpful suggestion. Thank you.
So if we've got that, if I've got the numbers right, we've got Mark, have we?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
With John as deputy?
Deputy.
And.
So it's nominations for deputy now.
Nomination for deputy. So we've got John.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Does Lee want to stand or not?
Yeah, I'm happy to go as deputy.
Well, yeah, okay.
And Andy's Andy seconded that.
So we've got Lisa or John as deputy.
Yeah, who goes first?
I think John came first.
John came first. All right. So all those in favour of John being deputy?
Smith, Harvey, Strain Clark, Stutchberry, Gateley, Ralph, Maudue. That's seven.
Okay, and all those in favour of Lisa being deputy? Can't see any hands there.
G Collins, Bloomfield, Cole, O'Donoghue, Hirons, Try, Mahi. I make that seven as well.
Yeah.
So chair's decision.
Boy. Even though I've already voted?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll go with Lisa then.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
So congratulations, Mark, wherever you are.
Thank you very much, everybody.
And Lisa.
Thank you.
Right.
Chairman.
Yes.
If it weren't be as well, can I propose that these meetings take place at very unusual times in the day? I'd like to propose that we we add John to the list because, quite frankly, I'm not sure when these meetings, time of day these meetings are going to take place. And with everybody's commitments on different things, it'd be most unfortunate if we hadn't got a a good string of people who can actually attend those meetings. So I don't think anything wrong with adding John to that list. Lisa attend those meetings if they happened on a wrong time for work. Lisa would be precluded. John is Mark. Employment picks up again. He could be precluded. And then we haven't got anybody who can attend those meetings. So I'd like to say that John would be our um.
Our third.
I think that's a sensible and prudent way forward.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Is certainly agreed. Everybody agreed on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, done. I'm okay with you, Paul, doing it that way. Yeah, okay, makes sense. Good.
Could I, could I just ask?
Yes.
I I'll just scan through the paper again. It is there provision for two deputies? I don't know. Are they going to be happy?
Not really.
Well, well, it's more an issue that if that our representative and the deputy can't make it, we would still then be able to send someone.
Yeah.
So that tells that that's an internal matter for the town council to decide how to nominate its third person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Good. Right. Um.
Oh, councillor Cole is waving his hands.
Councillor Cole, why is that?
I'm sorry, I'm also looking at the community board membership and it says item five two, no substitutes are permitted.
Oh.
That's what I was getting at.
Well, perhaps I I I'm happy to write to the community board on that basis and and say that, given the employment situation of our two councillors, we can we will have a second deputy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea.
I I think I think it's up to us who we send to a meeting to represent. And for them to say that if the person can't go, if they've ill work, they can't attend. That's another issue of democratic unaccountability within the community boards. So that's precluding discussion. And if they want to preclude um fifteen thousand people, whatever, in Buckingham from having a representative, that would be quite a big decision for them, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, because five point four says each community board chairman has the discretion to invite additional attendees. I know it puts a list of things under there, but maybe that, I don't see why we can't use that.
I wasn't asked by the cabinet member to be chair anyway, I'll tell you that.
Okay, so we need to move on to seven point two, the community board terms of reference.
Chair, can I just cut in?
Yes, sorry, John.
Um. Could I suggest that we just, if I propose that we suspend um standing orders and ask for some clarification from the person who is going to be the chair of our local community board, who I think is still present, is that not, Charlie?
Okay, yes, can we do that?
Because in terms of this, you know, substitutions and so on, we can get uh uh we can get a constitutional clarification from the chair of that community board. Uh. So I propose that we suspend standing orders to allow that to happen.
Sounds like good sport. Let's do it.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Hello. Well, I was, it's a good job I didn't just nip off to have my tea like Warren, isn't it? Um, uh, well, uh, the short answer is it will be down, there is provision for it always to be down to my provision, my uh discretion. And as Robin has eloquently said, uh, it would be wrong for Buckingham not to have a representative at a meeting for any reason if the uh nominated representative and the uh deputy were unable to make it. So I'm happy to be flexible on that. Um. But the, it does say no, no substitutions in the um in the in in the wording there. So so that is the official position, but I am a Buckingham registered and I can see no reason why I wouldn't want there to be a representative if there was a vote needed to be taken. And your representative won't be able to make it.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Charlie.
Sorted.
Good, thank you. Right, so can we move back on to the terms of reference, seven point two for the community board?
So seven point two and seven point three are really just for information unless there is.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Does anybody want to expand on that or happy with that?
Yeah, happy with that.
Happy with that. Right, we should move on to item eight then, the Buckingham Street market. We have a receive and discuss a written report from the deputy town clerk. Though I can't see.
Uh, Robin has a hand up.
Robin?
Um, if a deputy can't can't speak, um deputy can't approach me after events to ask whether we could put this on here as chairman. I felt that with the economic climate as it is, the opportunities did. And um after talking in length to the deputy town clerk, I agreed as chairman to support her bringing this to council as we couldn't agree in events and it needed a rapid decision. Claire is a very responsible officer and and she understands the law better than most of us. And if Claire, as a re- a retired um desk sergeant, is confident that she can control this situation, I feel absolutely um supported in her doing so. And um and so I hope that you will agree this and support the market. And we don't know whether this would bring other traders of a similar nature who of a similar disposition to the actual market. And I think it's a thanks for Claire's being so proactive and and thinking about the town in bringing this forward to me. And I apologize to my committee, it didn't happen to after the meeting and it couldn't have gone on the agenda.
Terry has his hand up.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes, I su- I support Robin. Um, a couple of years ago, we agreed that alcohol could be sold for a six-month trial, I believe, on the market. So I completely agree what Robin has said.
Yeah, I'll I'll follow that.
Happy with that?
Yep.
I'm happy.
Okay, so are we?
Chairman, chairman, should we take a poll? Should we take a formal vote, just to be on the safe side?
So to will vote on the recommendation that Buckingham markets also suitably uh allow suitably licensed stall holders sell sealed alcohol subject to the individual approval of both the markets manager and the manager town clerk. So can we take a vote on that? Who's in favour?
I think that is you know, oh no, unanimous minus one abstention. Oh, no, it's unanimous. I'll take that back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Brilliant, thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you. Right, so we shall move on. It's all agreed. Oh, there she is. Couldn't see before. Good. Thanks for that. It's a very good report. Yeah.
Excellent.
I promise you, it will be very carefully managed. It's not going to be, it would be sensible.
Yeah, I'm sure it will.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you. So we shall move on to item nine, recording online meetings. We have a written report from the town clerk. Lisa, you'll speak on that?
Thank you. Um, yeah, this kind of came about with a discussion that I had with Paul. Um, we were, um, he was putting those Zoom meetings on YouTube and then they were getting deleted. And um I thought it's, you know, the motion that I brought to do with the minute part was totally different to recording, as in videoing our meetings, which is being done now. And anybody with a computer can record the YouTube meeting after we've had it, because the meeting stays on YouTube for a little while afterwards.
Yeah.
So whether or not, if if people object to this, somebody can still do it anyway and it's totally out of our hands. So I've got no problem with um going forward on this. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak?
Robin has, Robin and John.
Robin?
I could, I have to support this motion, having took the first motion to our district council historically to ask them to be webcast and had to wait six months till the controlling group brought back the exact motion um to ask the webcast. I would be hypocritical if I didn't support um this being recorded. And it will actually be a a useful tool and it probably helped the meetings in the long term be more ordered.
Yep. Okay, thank you. John?
Uh, yeah, my point is two technical points really. One is um we're agreeing this now because we're using Zoom and therefore it's very easy to record the meeting. Uh, I'd I'd like us to consider the option that we carry on doing this in any case whenever we eventually get round back around the table again, because I think we should. Um. And secondly, uh, the technical problem is, do we have to pay for storage? If we if we keep all the recordings of town council meetings, are we going, are we incurring a cost to the town council? Uh, because we have to pay YouTube for that facility.
Can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
Um, certainly there's no charge at the moment. I think we're presumably classed as quite a low YouTube user. Um, I I think if we became very popular, we could start to advertise, but that would be a future discussion, wouldn't it? Um, ju- just to comment in terms of the suggestion about what we do going forward. Uh, so at the moment, we've agreed to this for a year because the law, the law allowing us to do this runs until May twenty one. So at the moment, we've agreed to this for a year because the law, the law allowing us to do this runs until May 21. It's likely that the law will be changed or extended in some way, but there's going to be a much wider national conversation about parish council what they want to do in that context going forward. So at some point in the next six, nine months, I think we'll have that debate. Once we know what the new law will be, we might even be able to comment on a consultation about that new law. So that might be a premature discussion, John, but certainly one we need to have this year.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak on that?
Robin.
Robin again?
It's just for clarity. So what you're saying, town clerk, is you'll monitor this and bring forward a report based upon the experience of this later in the year about how we go forward. Because if we do go for webcasting, once we get through the pandemic, that that has to be properly done. And we need to consider that within the construction of the new council chamber. And that needs to be installed within that construction. So I think we have to agree that pretty sharp, because once those works start, it'll cost us more money to put it in after and put it in while we're doing the work, so I would have thought. So I would envision this will go to resources and 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 then a recommendation out of the sea.
Good idea.
Lisa has a hand up.
Lisa?
Thank you. I don't think it'd be any extra cost after the chamber's done, because it's just getting video capability put in and wiring, which you can do in your own home. So I don't think it'll, the cost will be the equipment, obviously.
And just to update on that point, obviously, we have the two big screens in the chamber, which will be fitted back in, one's on a stand now. And we have, we are having cameras fitted to them because they came with the original cost, but they came very, very late. And they are Zoom ready, so by the time we're back in the chamber, we'll have equipment if we want to.
Good.
Oh, Martin has a hand.
Martin?
I'm glad I didn't have to leave it up all that time.
This is Martin's new hand, isn't it?
I'm now going to put a turntable on it now. Are we leaving them on YouTube? Or are we not taking them and putting them on our platform together with the minutes so that they're within our domain?
Currently, they're just going on to YouTube. Happy to investigate what we can do to take them down and own them a bit more, Martin.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds sensible.
And you're in the dark, Geraldine, by the way.
Am I in the dark? Well, I don't know why now. I'm in the dark.
I'm a bit fuzzy.
Anthony has his hand in Robin, I think.
Anthony?
Thank you. I I noticed, and I haven't used facility yet, but you can record these Zoom meetings anyway. And one assumes if a town clerk would record them, then we can just put it into our own archive and make it available through the website.
Could you both? Yeah, YouTube on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Only only to come back, Paul, on the construction of the council chamber. I'm not happy to put, we've got an opportunity to do this properly and investigate it. I think I'm not happy to tap wires around the outside of the building after we've just done it. I've done plenty of that in my life around the house, and it's never looked that great. So if we can put it in the construction, my wife used, my late wife used to have some problems with my wiring skills. Quite rightly so. So having done it all wrong in the past, I'm quite keen that we install it as we do the building. And 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 that, and as I said, a proposal goes to resources discussed with a recommendation to council. So we can have a long discussion about it in resources.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on that? No, no, can't see anybody.
Do you need a proposal and a second?
I'll propose it.
Anybody?
Second.
Second that? Who was that?
I actually, we actually agreed the recommendation in the first place. What's my first words I said on the subject, but are we agreeing? I'm happy for my amendment to be added as an amendment, that we take it to resources of a full report. Are we happy to agree that all in one? Because agreeing the report is one thing, agreeing the way forward to what we do afterwards is a second thing. And I think I'm happy to propose that we do, as I said, and that that goes forward to resources. Because I think that 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 allows us time to discuss it, not just like now, ad hoc, we'll have a report, the information before us, and we can take choices.
And Robin, you you mean take to resources what we do next in terms of?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying. That way it's just, then I'd like that seconded so that it can be done all methodically rather than like tonight.
Mike's got his hand.
Okay, Mike?
The the idea about considering putting more kit or whatever in the council chamber is a separate issue. The recommendation is simply that we keep the YouTube stuff up after our meetings are finished. That's what I'm proposing that we we accept.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to vote on the recommendation first.
Well, in which case, as I said, it was an amendment to it. It's that while we're agreeing the recommendation.
Doesn't need to be one, though.
But we do have to agree what we're going to do, Lisa. We can't just leave it in the air.
No, but you can put a motion on resources for that as a separate issue, as a separate thing.
Where I can do it now, you can either just ignore it or just do it anyway. I mean, I I I mean, if you don't want to second it.
You know that, you've done it before.
I know, I do lots of things. Okay. If nobody's happy to second the amendment, which is to include that in the motion, so it's all done at once, that's fine.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah.
Can we vote, Chairman, please?
Can we vote on the original recommendation first then? All those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. That is unanimous.
Okay, so can we do anything with Robin's amendment? Can we have a separate now or do we need to? Need that?
Chairman, Rob, Robin can put a separate motion.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, it'll it'll get seconded and discussed.
Yep.
Mike, I'll send it to you. I'll send it in in within 48 hours, chap.
What to rewrite?
Yeah, for you to correct the English and grammar.
Okay, clock's ticking.
Okay, we'll leave it at that then. So we'll move on to item 10, any chairman's announcements, which I haven't got at the moment. And item 11 is the date of the next meetings, which are the full council on the 13th of July and the next interim on the 14th of September, which seems a long way away, doesn't it? Little catch up with this, though, I'm sure. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for tonight's contribution.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can I just say that?
Yes, Paul.
For anyone watching this on YouTube, I'm about to stop the YouTube stream, but it will restart immediately for the planning meeting, so don't go away.
Okay.